It is now six o'clock and we will bring the plant and zoning workshop meeting going.
This is finding, this is ordinance here.
That white one, two things, is a white one.
I don't know which one it is, I know it's back of it, sort of coming apart. Is it that one? Lounge chair.
Can you go get her glasses?
Ollie.
What?
Why your glasses?
Can you get my glasses out of where? Your purse isn't with me. I didn't say my purse was missing.
She said, can you go home and get her glasses?
I am so sorry with my hearing aid.
That's okay.
Okay, I'll just, I'll get the order six. Oh, I am? Oh. Oh, okay. Okay, well, what the, um...
No, that's, that's something separate.
I would like to make a suggestion. Since this is planning and zoning, and our water and sewer and all that are planning and zoning, maybe we should discuss the special utility district. Found out about that.
A man from Hickory Creek named, um...
Brad White.
Brad White came and contacted the city. And, uh, we came up here and talked to him, uh, on, um, last Thursday, on Thursday. And he was wanting to know if the city would be interested in having, um, them do, take over all the city work, like the sewer plant and the water plants. And, um, he was telling, uh, he did some work for some other districts, Latwo City and, um, Celeste. And that, uh, they would be responsible for all the water leaks. Anything water or sewer related, they would be responsible for. Huh?
And the grant.
And the grant. And the TCEQ stuff that they would also take care of. Anything that was water or city related, um, anyway, they, they inquired about it. They said that they would bring, encouraged us to talk to some other entities that they weren't with now. And, um, they would bring, um, they would come and if we, we thought about, if we thought as a city council that we were interested in it, that they would come and present a presentation, to all of us.
But it's gonna take a citywide vote.
Yes, if the council decided that they, we were interested, it would take a citywide vote to do it. We could not decide just as a council because it concerned everyone as much as it concerned it. He said the water bills were probably about the same. He hadn't looked that far into it. The, um, um, trash pickup would still be ours. We wouldn't have to deal with, um, no, I don't say deal with them. We wouldn't have Patterson's even as far as testing the water and everything. They wouldn't be involved in it either. They would take over, he said, and we will take over all of it. And then included, uh, building the pits, uh, out there around the sewer plant that we need to build.
They also said that we would make, that as a city, we're probably only clearing between, when, did they say something like, please rebound from a minute off the water? And we'd still be doing that?
No.
What, what did you say?
They're, they're going, they take all the revenue from the water and the sewer. What our loss would be, would be that.
Our loss would be the two and three thousand, is that what you're saying?
They don't have any real numbers. But it's not gonna be much, um, because of the debt we're in. We, we pay Patterson sixty thousand dollars a year, plus all of repairs.
Nine thousand for the grant.
Nine thousand for the grant and another thousand for the loan. They take all of that, that's on them. So anything, again, like Lisa said, anything water and sewer related, they take it a hundred percent. Any debt, it all goes to them. Uh, any problems with TCEQ, it's on them. Basically, we're not getting hardly anything from our water revenue because of the debt we have. They would do the billing, uh, they would do, they do it, they do everything.
And the reading of the meters.
Reading of the meters, all of it. The skating system we have going right now is working about maybe ten percent. They would get that up and running a hundred percent so that they could, if our wells went down, they could see it at home, it would give them an alarm, they could bring it up and look at it, see what's going on. And if people's water meters were running for a twenty-four hour period straight, they would notify them. This is not gonna happen overnight, even if they do take over, which is, you know, if it's decided, then there, there will be replacing meters with a smart meter that's gonna tell them and report back to them of what's going on. The water system we have now will supply approximately a thousand homes, with the storage that we have and the wells we have, no additions. So basically, they didn't even wanna really discuss upper trinity, um, so we don't need them. Let them go and do their business, whatever they wanna do. You've got enough here in the city to take care of that. Sewer plant, same way, will supply the same amount of houses and all. Any line extensions or whatever, that'll be, they, they take care of all that, all the piping, everything. They don't do, they don't do potholes and stuff like that, they do water and sewer. Our lines have not been flushed in quite some time, and that's a TCEQ regulation, so, um, what else? Uh, they wanna change over everything to Master Meter, which is a brand name, it's not a specific meter. I understood that it was a specific meter that we were using like at Dollar General, different places, but that's not the case. That's a brand. You can buy different ones, but they prefer Master Meter, and they would change all that over to them. The fence, we know the fence last estimate was a hundred fifty thousand. That's a TCEQ regulation, they put it up, they take care of it. That's another expense off of us. Well number two, if well number one goes down and we're relying on well number two, and we lose power, we have no generator on well number two. So we would be out of water. They would get a generator installed, you know, right away. Because that's, it's on them, if we're out of water, it's on them. Uh, they, they have to take care of it. We've got about six thousand gallon storage, and that should suffice a thousand homes. They're asking if there's any interest, do we have workshop? They'll come, discuss everything, and kind of move from there. They're wanting to, uh, move on this as soon as they can, but it, it's not overnight. It's, it's gonna be several months, whatever, before this. If, if it even gets approved or whatever, it's, it's gonna take some time to get this put in place.
Can I ask a question? How long is contract for?
Uh, that'll be, that'll have to happen with the lawyers. So you definitely don't want to overextend yourself where you can't, you know, do something different or whatever, but...
They said all in all, that the other cities that they're, you know, with, it would take, it's taken about a year. Cause you have to have an election, you know, get it on the, um, for the city and all. It's, it's taking about a year, you know, if, you know, we're interested in it.
They've already come over and done research as far as how much storage we've got, the wells, and this and that, and everything. I mean, they were very knowledgeable.
Are they gonna put this, are they gonna put the pumps up on the ground so they don't burn out?
That's up to them.
Okay.
Once it, once it gets transferred to them, they can do what they want to. But they're responsible for them. So would it be a smart thing? Probably so. And they, they kind of suggested that they would go that direction.
Okay.
But they are the ones responsible for having water for the city. So, I mean, if they wanna truck it in or whatever, that's, that's all on them.
I came late, but, um, what towns around here have that?
Hickory Creek is one.
Celeste?
Hickory Kid Creek serves what, they, they serve fifteen, fifteen hundred square miles?
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen, I think it's total fifteen.
Hundred fifty?
No.
No, it's more than that.
There was a hundred and fifty in there or something.
I don't remember.
Well, I gotta ask that elephant question in the room, okay? If they do this, then y'all don't have any working capital. Cause your main way of making money here is through water, right?
Well...
I'm sorry, I had to ask the ten dollar thousand question.
When we talked to them, that was our first issue. We're gonna lose our revenue. But when you take all of these, all of this debt, I, I mean, that, that nine thousand dollars is for twenty-seven more years?
Something like that.
You know, that, that's every month.
That's every month?
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-three, we're budgeted to lose fifty thousand dollars of water district, is what y'all have in your budget, is to lose fifty thousand dollars.
Who are you?
Jody Ralph.
You work with?
Huh?
Who are you with?
The neighborhood.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
I'm a guy that's trying to learn what's going on in this town by reading.
Hey, nice to meet you, but I wanted to know if you were an entity here.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
No, he's a citizen.
Okay, nine thousand a month, did you say?
Plus another thousand dollar loan. Plus we pay sixty thousand to Patterson a year, plus the water leaks and sewer leaks.
And the fence.
Okay, and so if, um, per month, okay, I've got it. If they have to, a lot of our lines aren't any good anymore, do they replace them?
That's their, that's their issue.
And we tell them about that?
Yeah, they, they requested a couple of maps that we furnished, we didn't furnish them for them. We allowed them to contact KSA and get the maps so that they can actually see the meters, where they're at, and how the sewer line is running and all that. Because, I mean, they can't come into it blind. So, I mean, we're trying to give them a little bit of, you know, knowledge, you know, upfront.
So if they replace, sorry, I, I wasn't trying to be rude, I just wanted to know who we are. If, um, if they do replace these lines, there are a lot of them underneath the road. Are they gonna fix the roads, or are we gonna fix those roads, be it random?
That's gonna be probably for the workshop. We didn't really get into that. They do not do road construction. They don't fix potholes and stuff like that, so they're not...
Well, that's not a pothole, that's their...
I understand, so my assumption, and you know where that goes, is that they would come in, if they had to replace a line, and put it back as it was.
And who's this company again?
Hickory Creek, um, Special Utility District.
So then they would have control over the rates and everything as well, right?
Yes, um, they're a nonprofit, okay, so as is upper trinity, okay, so, um, the, the entities they serve so far have been real happy, from what we're told. I haven't contacted any of them. But, um, again, what we have is only gonna get worse. And if we have to do another three million dollar loan or grant, you know, and we're not going, grants are not out there. Right out, they're not out there. We've been told they are, but they're not.
But how about, you didn't finish my aunt question. If we let them come in and do it, and they take all the funds, you said that we wouldn't have all these, so how are you gonna make daily living expenses?
So, we're, we're hoping they're gonna come in and say, hey, they're gonna take these numbers, and this is gonna be for the workshop.
Right.
They're gonna take these numbers, and they're gonna say, okay, you're making, or you're charging X amount of dollars per month, per house, blah, blah, blah. Here's, here's what you're getting now versus what, what you're spending every month. How much are you actually making? I, I, I don't think it's gonna be ten bucks a house.
Actual making, right now, right?
Right, property.
Yeah.
After you take everything else away. I may be wrong, but, but I don't think it's, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not making a thousand dollars a house every month. It just don't work that way. And I know the attorney, he has told Pecan Gap, you cannot run a, a city selling water.
It's true. Well, we're going to borrow.
Well, that's another thing. If we, if we have more issues down the road, we gotta come up with that capital to take care of it.
Okay, but how are you gonna make daily monies?
We got property taxes and sales tax.
All right.
We got tower rentals, we got the tower rentals.
Tower rental?
Rentals, yeah.
We, we have a few things, but, you know, we don't, we don't have big moneymakers.
I know, but what I see...
But that's not gonna, at this point in time, even though we don't, what are we making off the water? If you're not making anything off the water, you're still relying only on your tax monies and stuff like that.
I got you.
So right now, the tower rentals pay one of those debt services.
Right.
So it's not even like that's, that's going to another loan.
Okay, so that would come into the city.
Okay, then that's, that was the question.
But that's right now, it's paying for the loan, right? So, I mean, we don't, we don't even have that revenue.
Got it. Well, there are people that are getting ready to build homes, and if they have the water, they'll build them. They're just waiting.
I, I don't know, my, when we went into this, into this conversation, I was not for it. When I left the conversation, I said, you know, I don't see any issues, you know, not to do this. I mean, with, with the amount of debt we have, and you, you don't start to think about these, these things, like when they started bringing them up, and thinking, yeah, we do, we do pay this and this and this, you know? And we have to take care of our own as far as, uh, like TCEQ. Patterson is gonna take up for part of it, but only part of it. And so they, in turn, they're gonna be a district, they will take it over, and they, they answer the TCEQ. We don't have to deal with that. If, if we have a, a water issue, we, that's, you know, something we have to deal with daily.
I thank you for answering my questions because there's gonna be a lot of questions out here in the public over it, and now that we know a little bit more, we can answer those questions.
We wanna set up a, a workshop so that they can come in, explain this a little bit better, maybe have some better information. This was kind of a quick thing, and just to kind of get a, a view of if we thought that maybe it would pass. We really don't know.
Well, with what you said, I like it.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna say, I've, um, had a few properties that have had a special utility district, and at first you think that it's more expensive because it's a separate bill, but when you look at it, it's really roughly the same, so... Yeah, I mean, that's how, it is an established city, so, you know, we might see some increase because of infrastructure or whatever, I don't know, but hopefully, they're gonna take all of those bills, the debts, and they're gonna take care of all of that.
Right.
If they do that, then...
And he did say there was a possibility, cause he was surprised that our water bills were so high. And he did say that, you know, there's a possibility, he said, I'm not gonna tell you it'll be lower, but he said there is a possibility that it could go down, you know, some of them could go down, maybe five dollars or ten, but still, down is down.
When you have the infrastructure and expertise and a complete system in place to take care of it, that could definitely happen.
And they did say that whenever it came time to work with upper trinity, that they would work with upper trinity.
Right.
They were not, you know, they were not, um, against working with them at all.
So would this include our allocation from the lake?
No, that was not discussed, they didn't even discuss the agreement that we have with the lake. They were just wanting to know about what we have in place right now.
What little bit we did discuss with them...
He said we would discuss that later with the lawyers, you know?
Is that...
So we wouldn't go into it.
Our two wells will suffice the city for a thousand houses. That's gonna suffice the city for quite some time.
But they're also gonna fix the big one over there that we didn't fix, you know, after we built the other one, the holding tower over there.
Storage tank.
They were gonna, uh, look into fixing it as well.
Yeah, currently, we only service less than three hundred meters.
Right.
At this time.
Well, they said, they said that their, their information was three hundred and fifty-two.
That's what TCEQ, okay, here's the deal. So, TCEQ, when they take their numbers, they want total number of meters in the ground. So some of these abandoned properties, and Mr. Brad White said this, he said, usually what should have happened is that as soon as a property gets abandoned, and it's been abandoned for a certain amount of time, he didn't give me a timeframe, that meter should have been pulled out of the ground. That's not what's happened here, and we have no clue at this point how many meters we truly actually have in the ground that aren't even serviced. I can just tell you based off, it prints this many bills every month. It's just under three hundred bills.
See, that's what I thought too, and then when he said it, I said...
No, that's, yeah, that's just a rough estimate based on, you know, for instance, the pink house down on Long Street, is there a meter, I believe there's still a meter in the ground down there. And we know that house next to the old nine oh nine's been, been empty for how long?
So what we wind up with the four would be the four round storage tanks, and then the white one.
One of, one of the tower.
So you'd have five then?
I'm gonna throw a little monkey wrench probably in this, but I approached, I asked the former city secretary, why the nine thousand dollars was set aside for water every month to pay back that loan? And I was told that at that time, when this loan was set up, that if they used it out of debt services, meaning property tax, property taxes would have been, would have gone up pretty high.
That's what they told us, that's crazy, the district said.
Yeah, so there's an option.
Ooh, and they have that one?
No, if you get rid of it, correct, but if we, as a city, if y'all decide not to pull, pull the full nine thousand, say you only do forty-five hundred out of water, the other forty-five you put towards the debt service and form a taxes. Those are options, but...
Yeah.
As opposed to relinquishing everything, if, if the citizens don't vote for that.
Yeah, but again, then, then that term on that loan is gonna increase.
Yeah, increase in penalties.
Cause you're not gonna be paying as much.
No, you still have to pay the same amount.
No, you're still gonna be paying.
Okay, but you're just gonna take it out of different funds.
The citizens would be paying more in property tax. You add that debt service, just, yeah, we'll get into that later.
Okay, so, we, we really need to get into that, maybe not today, but at this next workshop, because this is gonna be put on the citizens to vote this in or out, you know? One of the two, and if they know they're fixing to, if they don't, their taxes are fixing to go up.
Could be a possibility.
Yeah. Yeah, the taxes don't win though.
They're going up again, they're gonna give notices out on the twenty-eighth of this month.
But, but back, back to upper trinity, we kind of tried to explain to them what we, what they, our contract says, and, uh, and of course, they would have to get their lawyers to deal with them and whatever. But bottom line, he says, you don't need the water, sell it back to them. Terminate it, do, do something different. He said, you don't need it. If you did need it later, and you wanna drill a new well, drill a new well. I, I mean, there was a lot of options there on the table, and, you know, um... Anyway, I, I thought it was a good thing, everybody's gonna have a different opinion, but the more information we can get and give, the better we are. So we need, definitely need to contact the entities that they serve, make sure they're being served well, and been taken care of, and, uh, and all that. And one, one thing, I, I said that at some point, they'll be able to know, um... I mean, they can pull it up on their phone and see if your water meter's running, okay? Deisha's a good example. Her water meter ran knows how long. And her bill was going crazy. She didn't know she had a leak. Well, they'll be able to, it'll, it'll send them a flag after that meter has run for twenty-four hours straight, saying, "Hey, you got a, you got a water leak, or we got an issue somewhere."
And of course, I asked if there was any way to make it less than twenty-four hours. Because, you know, water can run through the lines for twenty-four hours. And he said that he thought that there could be, if we wanted it, but, um, as a general rule, twenty-four hours is what they have it set up for.
Right.
And I mean, the, the system we have, data can do it, we just don't have the equipment attached to it to do that.
But, including what he's saying, yes, it's more than capable of doing all this. It's just not being used.
Right, it's not being used at all, but it's full potential.
And that would be the first thing they would fix.
Yeah. So they need to be able to know when these wells are running and wanting, and they're not, and all this. Um, another thing to add to that, we have to buy chlorine. I don't know how often we buy chlorine, but chlorine's expensive and getting worse.
Yes.
So there's, that's another added expense that the city has to take care of, so.
Well, some of this is gonna be a net-net, because we're gonna pay for chlorine one way or another. So as an example, we buy it, it goes into the water bill. They buy it, it goes into the water bill. So we need to carefully don't mix in stuff that we're paying for one way or another.
Right. And then, and, and they also have sources where they can buy a little bit of things a little bit cheaper than just the city. But they, like their piping and stuff like that, they're on a, a system that, where they buy by block. And, uh, and they used to be on block, what was it, like, block eighteen or something? Now it's four hundred. So they're way down, way down the line, but they still can. And when that block system, it allows you to buy it at a certain point in time, at a certain amount. And so, and how much you're, how much you're buying out of it, if you want, you know, one pallet of it, or if you want a hundred.
I think all of us probably went in thinking that we didn't like what they were gonna say, but if you listen to them, uh, it sounds like it'd be the smartest thing this city could do.
So for the record, who was at that meeting? Mayor, Deisha, myself.
It was Thursday.
They contacted me to set up the meeting.
I just wanna point out that in a council session like this one, if Kimmy was missing, that would create a quorum, a meeting that you guys had, based on whatever action the council would be taking, so be careful.
What do, what do you mean if Kimmy was missing?
So if we were in a council session making a decision about this right now, and the three of you had met with them without posting it, it could be argued that the three of you were stacking it.
We didn't have three people.
One, two, three.
He's saying if, if, if Kimmy was not here, and it was a two-two vote, and she was the second back there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's true.
So just to be aware of what the appearance of that is.
Well, frankly, uh, I, I wanted to make sure Deisha could come, so we had it at three. Okay?
It'd be nice if they were gonna make a presentation, if they would do it through the entire council.
Well, they just wanted to talk for me.
I just wanna know if anybody'd be interested.
'Cause, uh, you know, when you first hear it, you go like, um, I don't think so. But in fact, Deisha and I talked, and we thought, like she said, if the town's revenue is water, what are we going to do? But when you listen to it, you find out, huh, okay, this makes more sense than I thought it did, you know? And it does make a lot of sense. And, uh, of course, uh, I asked Greg to come, because, I don't know if they've talked to him, have they talked to you before?
No.
No? Anyway, there was two, what, what was the other guy's name?
Uh...
It was Brad White, Mike somebody?
Mike, uh, Mike Home, Mike, anyway, yeah, Mike.
Anyway, uh, they seemed like, uh, you know, they were interested with the three of us of being in it. Of course, I always try to include Deisha because of her being the mayor pro temp. But, there's a lot of time, and that, luckily, she can come after three, you know? And Greg does so much on the water department, that's why I included him. I mean, I'm not being prejudiced.
Did not say you were? It sounds like they're gonna come make a presentation at a future workshop.
Oh, no, they said they are very interested in doing that.
Yeah.
If everybody's interested in hearing what-
Yeah, we would love to have this place packed, and that the people hear, and not hear rumors of what it's going to do.
Right.
Or just hear what they have to say, and let them make up their own mind.
And with a vote like that, it would only, you'd only have to have fifty-one percent.
Of what, the people?
No, of the votes.
Of the votes.
Of the last election, he said.
No, no.
He did say something about the last election.
Yes, but that was, that, that didn't have anything to do with, um, that vote.
Well, what would he do?
The last, the last election was if you had to get, um, a, um, when you go around, you, um, a petition, then you'd have to have a certain percentage of the voters sign the petition.
Oh, I thought you started from the amount of the people.
But if enough, but if enough people are interested in it, then it's put on the, um, ballot, it's called a measure of ballot. Uh, and it's put on there to vote on, only fifty-one percent of that, the voters that voted that day.
Would that be a special vote, or?
Yeah, well, it can be.
Well, it can, it just depends. I called, um, Ms. Biggers today, and she said that, you know, if we wanted to do it in November, that we could. And I said, "No, we're not looking really for a special election with, you know, added expenses to it."
Right.
We just, 'cause, but she said, "This November, they're, uh, voting on some items, and it could be added to that ballot if we saw it soon enough that we wanted to add that particular item to the ballot."
Is the people in the county gonna be able to vote who paid the water bill?
This would, no.
It's just the city limits, or is it the whole CCN?
The people who buy, the people-
That is, 'cause our CCN extends out.
It would only be fair, I would think.
I would think so too.
But that's my opinion. If you're gonna pay for the water.
Yeah, I think it would have to include the whole CCN, because they-
They got water out there too.
Yeah, I mean, if they go out and extend a line, or if they go out and set a meter or whatever, you should be involved in whatever.
Right, 'cause I will, just from talking to him briefly, like, he asked what our tap fees are, and I told him. And we are significantly lower than what they would be charging.
Right.
So that would be a-
But that would only be, that would not have been a replacement meter.
Right, no, that'd be a new tab.
Do what?
Five thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
For a new meter. But if you already have one there, it, that's not how much it costs.
Right.
It's only for new homes only, it's the fifty-eight hundred.
That's what they're doing out on twenty-nine nine.
Right.
And fifty.
Right. Well, I mean, that, that's the whole thing. I mean, I mean, they're doing it all over. But most people, if they're building a house, they kinda build that into the cost of the house. So it, I mean, no, it's not. It doesn't cost any less, but-
It just sounds astronomical. It does, I mean, I'm getting it.
When you put six thousand, well, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, ain't it?
So it is gonna probably include people like myself, who are on the water line?
I would think so. I would also do that, but I will put my money out.
Well, they come and talk to us, I think that would be good, but you need to give the people in town enough time to get it out, that they're, we're gonna have this meeting.
Right.
Right.
And let them know that the potential of this, so they'll come.
But I'll broker on the water bill. We, we can go online, whoever can go online and look at a, a normal water bill or whatever that they charge. And just hickorycreek.com, no, Hickory Creek.
Utility, S U D.
S U D, I think, dot com. Anyway, we've taken up quite a bit of time. To me, before we really get involved in this, I think we need to get a, get an idea of what we wanna see out of the zone. You know, kinda get an idea of what, what people are thinking.
I mean, are y'all interested in them having them, them present something?
Oh, yes, I am.
Listening?
I say yes. It'll help our town, yes. It's worth exploring. Yep. You know, the same, no, explore.
Do we wanna set up time for the workshop?
Are you talking about for them to be out there? Shouldn't we talk to them and see when, when it'd be a good time to be out?
Um, I mean, we can, we can always, you know, change or whatever, but if, you know, if we tell them, "Hey, this is done." When I thought to, to Brad, he said, "Just let me know, I'm gonna be there." So.
Okay, since we can't vote on anything tonight, uh, of course, at this workshop, um, we'll contact, um, Hickory Creek, that Brad White, and see when he can set up a workshop with the citizens of Loudounian. And then that way, um, we can let everybody else know, and bring it up at the next city council meeting to put the date out there and vote on it and everything.
And I'd like to know more about the taxes, how it'll affect that one, what is it, ninety thou, nine thousand a month? Thing, I'd like to know how that is gonna work out too. 'Cause it's affecting taxes, so I'd like to know how that works out.
No, that's only if, if, that's only if-
If you don't do it.
We take out part of it out of the water, and part of it, uh, out of the taxes. That's the only way it would affect the taxes.
Yeah, if they take this over, then it's nothing.
It does not affect your taxes that way. Yeah.
Oh, I see. But-
It's only if we left it like it is now, and we chose to change how, where the money comes from to pay for that loan.
Right.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. So if you keep it partially in, then it won't affect our taxes?
If we keep the water district the way it is now, and we changed where it came out of the budget, that's where Dana was told that it would affect the taxes, we'd have to raise taxes. Isn't that why it's here?
Right, that's correct.
And if not, if we choose not to, and leave it coming out of the water, then it would stay the same, the ta, it wouldn't affect the taxes. But if they take it over, it's not gonna affect it either. Unless we choose, as a city council, to have the taxes voted to be raised.
Okay.
But it won't be because of the water.
Correct.
Correct. That's, that is gonna be a key part right there.
Yeah.
That whole thing. 'Cause taxes, they're gonna run up big time.
Yeah.
I've been down, up there a lot lately.
Okay, so if this is anybody else that-
Can I ask, I was thinking about the ordinances, because your ordinances are-
This is a P and Z workshop, and we're already way off track.
Well, is there another place-
This is P and Z though.
Where do, where do P and Z permit fees get deposited? General fund or water department?
I couldn't, hey.
General fund.
I would say general.
We are way, we are way out of bounds.
So is our infrastructure not part of P and Z?
Water infrastructure is not. It's part of the water department.
It is part of the water department. But that doesn't-
Okay, well, we'll talk about it.
I was just trying to get out, is there a little city that has a good ordinances, that we can look at their ordinances, to get an idea how to fix ours? Since we've been having such a hard time getting it done?
Um, yeah, many, look at anybody's, anybody's ordinances there online, so.
Okay, I'm gonna call this man in at six forty-five. It's now seven o'clock, we'll call the, um, monthly meeting, the order. Uh, Russell?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Deisha, she's here. Kimmy?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Daniel Patton?
Tricia?
Here.
Okay, do I have a volunteer to do our invitation?
Okay. How I'm gonna hear my invitation? Thank you, sir, for the volunteers.
Lord, we give thanks for this amazing and beautiful day. Well, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here, and, uh, we ask for wisdom. And the things that we do make this community a better place. But we ask you your blessing tonight, and all who serve, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honors the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I have one with citizen comments, uh, Ms. Xander, would you like to go?
Sure. I got two topics I'd like to discuss. Um, good evening, everybody, how Tricia, how you doing? Okay. Um, people of the U B U was awarded a grant for cigarette receptibles. And it's where we can post those at different locations in town. I would like to post one here at the city council chambers, maybe out here, wherever. Y'all won, uh, city hall. And, um, this is something that I would collect, send them away to be recycled somehow, I don't know what they do with them, but, um, but that would happen. So, this way, this freed each other. You don't have to be like Sandy on Grease and go, and put it out like that. You can just put it in- Second thing is, and I have cards for everybody. Second thing is to, we, uh, keep looking at the beautiful was awarded, uh, grant for cigarette receptibles. And it's where we can post those at different locations in town. I would like to post one here at the city council chambers, maybe out here, wherever. Y'all won't, uh, city hall. And, um, this is something that I would collect, send them away to be recycled somehow, I don't know what they do with them, but, um, but that would happen. So this way, this freed each other. You don't have to be like Sandy on grease and go, and put it out like that, you can just put it in the box. Cool? So I'd like to invite everybody to, I'm gonna ask y'all's permission, I don't know how you wanna do that, but I would like to have permission from the city council to put one here and then I'll address different businesses in town. Rita, take one and pass it down. This is a card, it's just a business card. You're not, just cause you take one, that mean you're agreeing to anything. You don't mind anything? Well, welcome, my, my name's. Okay, nice to meet you. All right, um, so that's probably all I have. Any questions, let me know. My name and number's on the card, the Facebook pay up list on the card, and my email address. Cool? All right, thank y'all. And who did you get a card?
Is there anyone else? Uh, okay, the next is the minutes for the March twenty, twenty-three meeting. There is a brief, uh, ordinance workshop minutes. There's a residual request minutes. And the closure of, uh, Stevens Street, uh, minutes. Uh, and ordinance workshop, uh, minutes on the twentieth of March. And the, uh, regular minutes on March the twentieth. Do y'all wanna do these all together or separately?
There's one correction on your regular minutes.
Okay.
For the meeting. Item F under new business, change that to deny to dent.
I haven't yet.
F. Under new business.
Make a motion that we approve the city council workshop for Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, ordinance workshop minutes.
Yeah, we'll do these separately.
I'm just taking action.
Okay, Russell's made a motion, um, to accept the ordinance workshop minutes for March the sixth. Okay, I'm gonna second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next, uh, meeting is, um, the next minutes are the residual request on March the sixth.
Make a motion to accept the Monday, March sixth, residual request minutes.
I'll second it. Okay, Russell's made a motion to accept the minutes for the residual request for March sixth. Give me a second of that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is a closure of Stevens Street minutes for March the sixth.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes for Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, for the closure of Stevens Street.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to accept the minutes for March sixth for the closure of, uh, Stevens Street. I'll second, Debbie's gonna second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance workshop for March the twentieth.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, ordinance workshop.
Okay, Russell made a motion to approve the March twen- uh, twenty twenty-three ordinance workshop minutes.
Second.
Give me a second of that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, regular minutes for March the twentieth. Uh, with the, um, correction of F to, uh, for the word to be denied to dent included.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, March twentieth, regular meeting as corrected.
Russell made a motion to accept the minutes with correction for March the twentieth minutes. Uh, Kimmy has seconded that motion, all in favor? Okay, financial report for March twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the financial report for March twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to approve the financial report for March twenty twenty-three. I will second that motion, all in favor?
Hang on, there's a discussion on that. There continues to be outstanding, uh, data on the financial report regarding repayment for certain items, including taxes, that I do not see in the water department's income. We need to get somebody to Dana to correct these financial reports or I will again be voting to not approve financials. This is the third month in a row I've done this because the financials are not correct.
Do you know what needs to be done, Deb?
I meant, I need to talk to her about it.
Okay, so you will take care of that? Okay, Russell's made a motion to accept the, um, financial reports as is with, um, the city's secretary, uh, giving someone to, uh, fix the taxes.
Anticataлизation of those expenses under the water department.
And the repayment of.
Mm-hmm.
And I have seconded that motion, all in favor?
What we talking about?
The financial report.
He's talking about the water department.
The water department.
All right, the general fund.
No, the tax.
Oh, just tax repayment?
That needs to be fixed.
Oh, okay.
You know what we're talking about, you know what he's talking about?
Great. Dana, so do you know what he's talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, that means, is everybody on the side page? We have a first and a second. All in favor? Gray?
No.
Kimmy?
Russell?
No.
Debbie?
No.
So it's one for and four against. Okay, the next, um, agenda is accounts payable for April twenty twenty-three.
How many more payments do we have from the kind of hand?
This is the last one, that number four is it? Uh, write it off your notes. I'm sorry. Take the number three off.
Okay, I was gonna say number three is on there.
Yes.
Take number three off?
Yes.
So what's that total you wanna leave?
Fifty-eight seventy-five. Oh, the total, total number one.
Mm-hmm, your total now is twenty-one forty-one seventy.
Fourteen-two-six-six-seventy.
Anybody else have any questions, more questions?
Any council members or staff aware of any unauthorized expenses on this payable report? Make a motion to approve accounts payable for, uh, April twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Russell's made a, um, motion to approve the accounts payable for April twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Give me a second of that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, information reports. Utility water department, Gray?
Nothing to speak of.
Volunteer fire department?
Chief's report for March twenty twenty-three, total calls fifteen, medical calls seven, grass fire one, accidents two, controlled burns two, other, three, called out for storm spotters, one medical home alert, and a lawn mower fire. Volunteer hours twenty-four point three five, water usage one thousand gallons. In the month of March, we had one night of training and no business meeting. Training has slowed down due to a few members in EMT school. We are still needing members and volunteers. Signed, Kostar, Chief of Ladonia Volunteer Department.
Thank you very much. The administration department, we have spring cleanup, April twenty-second through May the sixth. Early voting at the city hall will be April twenty-four to April the twenty-eighth and then May first through second, uh, at the normal business hours. Election day is May the sixth at city hall, seven AM to seven PM. There will be the twenty-mile garage sale, May the sixth, twenty twenty-three. Feeding pattern will be May the second, twenty twenty-three. And mosquito spray will start June the twenty-ninth. And will be the twenty-ninth, July the twenty-seventh, and August the twenty-fourth. Uh, I'm gonna go back up to utility public works department. Um, I don't know if y'all noticed, but, uh, he's been really trying to get, um, Main Street there where it's not keeping the holes that it was. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Um. Okay, this Thursday, the, uh, office, uh, here at the city hall will not open until one cause they will be embalmed for the election training. Um, at this time, we're gonna go to the new business with Doug Joway's presentation, fossil park.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Council, I don't know if it's a presentation necessarily, I was asked to come forward and talk about the fossil park, but before we do that, I do want to bring up something, uh, for you. As you, uh, as many of you are aware, Opportunity has been working with the Northeast Texas Children's Museum and Commerce. And, uh, we want to invite you to the ribbon cutting that will happen on May seventeenth at ten AM. Uh, the, uh, city of Ladonia is, uh, uh, we, Opportunity did this, but certainly we want to promote the, uh, the fossils and we built this, uh, display over in the, at the children museum. And so anybody here, certainly the council, the mayor is invited to that ribbon cutting ceremony. If you look in here, you'll see, uh, and I don't know if the folks can see us out here or not, you're just looking and look at it. Got a few of these, you can look at them. If you haven't been over there, um, there are some very large exhibits and it's actually interactive thing. The kids can go in and try to find fossils, uh, in the, in the museum. So this is something we've been working on for quite a while and thankfully it's, it's, uh, ready to be open. And it'll have the ribbon cutting on, uh, May seventeenth at ten AM. I got a few of these, if anybody wants these, we got a few more of these, uh, if anybody wants them, I'll leave them here on the corner. Okay, uh, the mayor had asked me to come forward, I guess, and discuss the fossil park. Um, I'm happy to discuss that, so just where we are, a little history, I guess, first, is that, uh, Opportunity, uh, back in twenty twenty, Opportunity needed to purchase the old fossil park with the city. And so we approached the city at that time, uh, back in, I'd say, November of twenty twenty and, uh, made a proposal, we, uh, entered a contract with the city, uh, at the appraised value and worked to the title issues. As part of that, we also have, uh, before we closed it, we actually, uh, came to the city to make a proposal to relocate the fossil park at the temporary location of twenty-nine ninety, which we did and it's been open since that time. Uh, ultimately, the, uh, the EIS, the environmental impact segment study for the lake, uh, called the existing Ladonia fossil park, uh, an important asset to the local community and should be mitigated without an alternate location at, uh, FM nine oh four and the Sulpur River for future use by the public. And so, uh, that's what Opportunity is endeavoring to do, is provide that permanent location at nine oh four, uh, down at, uh, at the Sulpur River, nine oh four. Uh, that being the, the location that was identified in the EIS back years ago. Uh, so we, as part of a proposal for that, we had, since the Ladonia had been operating the original fossil park, uh, we had offered up to enter into a long-term agreement with Ladonia to essentially, uh, maintain, operate a new fossil park in the same manner you had with the old fossil park. Uh, there's, there was nothing, uh, there's no requirements to the city on that, it was, uh, just, uh, a discussion. Uh, we thought that's something the city wanted to do and so we came forward with that proposal. Now Ladonia did not approve that or accept that, and so at this time, uh, while we will move forward ultimately with a fossil park, uh, there is no requirement that Ladonia really do anything. do anything related to it, incur any costs, which, uh, again, our original proposal to Ladonia was to, uh, essentially operate the new fossil park like the old fossil park. And, uh, I'm not aware of any additional expenses that should be incurred by the city over and above what was done originally, but, uh, that was certainly for your own, how you operate was kind of up to you in that situation. Uh, we, you know, we have no requirement of you, and, and, uh, you know, we're happy to sit down and talk about details on, you know, how we might accomplish, uh, that community asset. That's entirely up to you, and we stand ready to talk about it and, uh, try to figure out the best way to, really for us to satisfy that, uh, need to replace the, the old, that old public access to the river and a, a location for, for fossil park. As you can see, we take it seriously, we've, uh, you know, cooperating with the children museum to, you know, look forward to educational programs, uh, we're trying to, you know, do things for the community, things like that. We're gonna do the fossil park as well, and, uh, we stand ready, again, to sit down with you whenever you want to and talk about it, um, as far as how you want to be involved, or if you don't want to be involved, that's really up to the city at this point, and, uh, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. Maybe I've left something out, or haven't covered something, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Property itself would be on the upper trinity?
We do own the property, we had offered, uh, the original proposal back in 2020 was that we would, uh, lease it to you at a nominal, uh, fee per year.
And by nominal, you mean?
A dollar per year. You had a, the original property you owned on thirty-four was actually on a, uh, a deed that, uh, had a revert clause in it, and so, you know, I don't know that ultimately if you actually owned the property or not, but it was, uh, we did, uh, purchase it from those remainder owners, uh, and they were ultimately the, the owners of the property once the fossil park wasn't being used as a fossil park.
What would be the requirement if the city took over the fossil park? Or the city, uh, I was told that, I think it was at our last, um, when Jen was there, that they were expecting people like insurance, liability insurance, and I think I was just told something that, uh, we would be responsible for porta potties for the people and stuff like that, is that true?
Uh, we haven't had those discussions to know the details, we had offered, uh, our basis for discussion was essentially in a, I'm trying to say it in the language here somewhere, that was, uh, um, here's, I'll read it, it says, "Whereas the district will construct a permanent location for Ladonia Fossil Park at FM 904 and North, North Sulfur River, such relocated fossil park property to be leased to Ladonia at a nominal annual fee, with Ladonia remaining responsible for any operation, regulation, and future improvement maintenance, up to the same, in the same manner of Ladonia's current responsibility to the existing fossil park." Now that's what we had in the details of the agreement that we provided to see Ladonia back in 2020. I'm sure you have a copy of that, kind of somewhere in your records, uh, but that was not actual by the city. Uh, what ended up happening was that, uh, the council, uh, decided to split these issues out, we had a, if you recall, we had the, uh, hundred acre, uh, property over here that you owned and we leased, and, uh, it was actually adjusted to seventy acres, although we still paid the same, and we kept up the same payment, uh, as what we originally agreed to, uh, but for less sacred, so you, you actually maintained the thirty acres on the south, we have the hunt, the seventy on the north. Uh, so those were both in the same agreement, uh, and the city, uh, decided not to move forward as a, as a unified agreement, instead we split those out, we did one item for the, the lease, and one item for contract to sell for the Ladonia Fossil Park. And all we dealt with in the fossil park contract was the actual purchase of the property, we didn't deal with, even though we had offered and, and suggested, uh, that we, uh, do these, then the, the city had, uh, uh, we decided to split that out, just deal with the purchase separately from anything else, and basically hold off, uh, later, for later discussions on what happens with the new fossil park. We just haven't had the discussion, so, uh, whenever the city is ready to, we're certainly happy to sit down and figure out what the best approach is, uh, it's not our intent to, uh, starting to cost the city any money, uh, you know, I can't speak to your insurance, I know we're a government agency also, we have, you know, a, a insurance policy that kind of covers everything we do, not specifically for a particular property necessarily, but yours may be different, I don't know how yours is handled, it's through TML or something, I'm not sure, but you might check with those folks about how your insurance works. I don't know what kind of insurance you had on the previous property, but it was on city property at that time, uh, as opposed to on a leased property, so I don't know how that might change your insurance provisions or, or costs, or, or if it was, can you change at all? Uh, but, you know, that would be up to you on the check, or on the city, but hasn't, I mean, I can't speak to that. We didn't require that, uh, I think that was, I mean, it's certainly something smart to do, to make sure you had insurance, and they already had it, I don't know. It might be something to ask your, uh, insurance folks, or whoever deals with that.
So at this time, there's really not anything to decide, since we don't know really for sure where it's gonna be, or all the details, right?
We, we don't have the details, we are working on, uh, some, some, some things down there, we're, we're, um, trying to really come up with a, with a good, um, plan for, uh, you know, for the fossil park, but, uh, it hasn't, you know, we've been, as you can see, the bridge and the dams, the roads and all that's really had most of our attention for now. You know, once we got the temporary fossil park open and operating, and I think that's, you know, the access is certainly an improvement over the previous access, time by the highway, so, uh, that's been working fine for now, as far as I know, I don't know of any problems with it now, so we're kind of functioning now as we are, we got a, a little while before we get to the next step, and we'll, we'll take time to, uh, but we will build the fossil park, that's what, um, we, we did call to do, so, when we would, certainly offer even as part of our agreement to have Ladonia as a part of the input, along with what that looks like, you know, so...
Is anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
So, I'm trying to find one question. How far out do you think y'all are before you get to that point that y'all are ready to?
I, I don't have the timing on that, I, I wish I had, I don't have it for you. Again, we're, we're all hands on deck, you might see the road closed, we're trying to get, we want to get thirty-four bridge open and, and fifteen fifty open, and, uh, you see the sidewalks are being built, and they're out there, actually, I just drove by when we go, they're out there building right now on the sidewalks, so they're, they're working daylight to dark, uh, on getting the, you know, the trails, I heard somebody today say won't be the first person, who was it, won't be the first person to cross that trail?
Right here.
We hear somewhere, what was it? Oh, right, you're saying, yeah, he was, uh, he'll be the first one to cross it, so, uh, I know folks are anxious to wait for that, but we're, we're, we're working on it right now. But we, we will, we'll get back to it, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do that, so...
Thank you.
Thanks much.
So, old business, uh, out of D, and new business out of A. As far as Mr. Joway's presentation, there's no action to tackle either of those at this time?
Make a motion to the table, old business out of D until appropriate.
Okay, Russell's made a, a motion on out of D, uh, old business to tackle until an appropriate time. Um, is anyone willing to second that motion? I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to old business, the phone system upgrade versus the current. Okay.
You know, there needs to be that email.
Okay, well, yeah, but they're, they're a plan B for down the road. Okay, so, in, in discussing the options for an upgraded VOIP phone system, uh, it's, it requires a good high-speed internet foundation, which we do not have access to at city hall, and so their recommendation was, you know, we spec that a system for you that meets your needs and is a benefit to expand, but it won't work the way you want it to unless you can get hyper-optic internet speeds out here, so, um, not, not a waste of time. What we did discover as well was, we're paying for, how many copper lines, Steve? Copper lines for the SCADA systems, but the SCADA systems don't use at all.
Yeah, that's what this email from Jason Benj is about, which y'all got. Um, this from AT&amp;T, this office at hand will run off of our internet that we currently have. It is cloud-based.
So we did...
But here is the price of the cloud.
We did get it.
Currently paying seven hundred and something dollars a month.
About two fifty, one oh four, that's our plan? Yeah, I mean, we got a competitive bid, but it's apples and oranges, and we're not even possibly...
That's a thing, and if, and if we're gonna go, is that firework, in the near future? We don't know when.
Exactly.
I understand, but if that's gonna be the thing, then I would think it'd be a waste at this point, so...
We can always revisit it later when the technology infrastructure changes.
Because currently, our best option is what y'all are working out, crosswise.
So is this a simple transition to the new monthly rate with new service?
That, how they make it sound.
Okay, oh, that's where we're at. Okay, so, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, monthly expenditure of two fifty, one oh four, and, um, that city secretary, uh, implement this as soon as possible.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to, uh, accept the phone system upgrade, um, and, uh, have the city secretary implemented ASAP. Do you see any other rules?
Everything.
Is there a...
This part doesn't include taxes, obviously, but enough to justify the change.
So I will amend the motion to say cost plus taxes?
Is anyone willing to second that motion?
I agree, before the price goes up.
Can you second that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five?
No.
Feature?
Uh... Okay, annual tank water inspection. Sheriff's?
We only got one quote.
And...
Did you not say the Ron Harren market?
We're off there in Texas tank, right?
And Texas tank, two from Texas.
I thought that was the same one. Those two different ones. I thought this other one was just, was the same, but...
They reuse last time.
Texas tank. So the first quote, we said, Ron Harren's, is just his, um, that's just for the, um, tanks themselves, the inspection, Texas tank, the first one, the nine ninety-eight, is just for the inspection, the twenty-two forty-nine is inspection and in-service cleaning, so that's the difference in your inspections.
Then we did budget for this?
Yes, ma'am, you did not budget for the cleaning one, the twenty-three forty-nine.
Okay.
They will facilitate all of that in the future, yes, I mean, those inspections have to be done yearly, but it, I'm a question, I'm asking, but could you back before they go away?
Even if it goes in, they're not gonna take over in time to take care of it.
Right, right, right.
Anybody else have any more questions? Okay, what would y'all like to see done? And our budget is for, uh, the nine ninety-eight, right?
About a thousand.
About a thousand, okay. Okay, so do y'all want to go with the first estimate that we have budgeted for, or, uh, for this Texas tank, or, um, in-service cleaning?
I think we oughta wait on the in-service cleaning, but if we make a, if we make a change, then that's, that's a pretty big amount, so we do have to have the inspection, so...
Who else?
You can always come back and do the cleaning.
You have a question?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the, the tank inspection.
For?
Texas tank, just 'cause they did it last time for nine ninety-eight.
Okay, Greg's made a motion to accept the estimate for Texas tank services for nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Give me a second at that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. All in funds earmarked. Okay, does everyone that's already in the need to speak up? Is it relevant?
But I will say that we had talked about at one time that the earmark, we would buy the earmark for the fence around the church, 'cause that was a hundred and, hundred plus thousands. And then also, any money that was left, put one of the motaries above ground on the water, on the pump. So then, one, if one of the pumps went down, we wouldn't have to wait on water because we have one above ground that we'd be working. And those are the two things that we had talked about earmarking it for.
What's that current balance, Donna, do you know that?
It's not, it's not enough to cover what you want to do.
What is it?
It's probably about, as of right now, you're probably only sitting at about seventy thousand dollars. Sixty-eight, seventy thousand.
Can we get a firm number on that? I haven't seen it, any of the paperwork in quite some time. Last month, public funds showed zero.
That's deposits made.
I understand.
Okay.
But this is showing revenue. And then, we go back to, on the general, and where it's moved to the water expenses, same thing. So... I mean, you're saying, what'd you say, seventy-eight thousand, somewhere, somewhere around that number? Where is it, though? What account is it in?
It's in the general fund.
And it's just commingled with the rest of it?
Correct, it is, because at this time, no one ever earmarked it for anything. Y'all discussed, but not one time was it ever put on an amendment to do that. The other thing is, and y'all have been made well aware of this one as well, that when the council hired a second footworks employee, that pretty much blew that budget out of the water. No, ma'am, you're right, they're working, they're sitting just taking it all in that council. And that's where that first tranche money comes from.
I don't remember voting on that, and I wish that we would see where it was voted on.
Where what was voted on, to hire Brady?
No, voted on, taking the money from the COVID fund to pay for the payroll. You said that we had voted on it.
No, because you voted to hire somebody. You vote, y'all voted to hire somebody and to give him a salary. And then no one ever went back and changed your budget and tried to figure out an account for where that money was gonna come from. Not only did y'all pay some, give him a job, but then, two months later, voted for a raise. Yes, ma'am, pay significant compensation.
I understand that, but again, that-
We have to pay the employees, and we have to pay our loans somehow.
But when I was first elected mayor, you and I had our first discussion on COVID money. You told me you had to pay an insurance.
We had to pay lots of bills, but that's where it-
It was insurance, and that's where it was based then, that it was insurance that was being paid.
Well, it was used to cover several things.
And then, now, it's being told, after, I guess, seven, eight months on, or now being told, that when Jan was mayor, and we hired Brady, that the council voted to, I, well, I think I understood what you're saying. Of course, we got a raise, we were hired, but somehow or another, it was said that we decided that this would all come-
No, no one ever decided. When y'all approved to pay bills, your approval is use the money that's there. When y'all approve, your account's payable every month right here, your approval to pay those out of whatever funds we still have. Those funds are not specifically set aside earmarked for something.
So how do we handle non-budgeted items?
They were, y'all and them, were all supposed to go back and amend their budget.
Before it was removed, or transferred, or whatever happened to it?
Before they, before anyone was hired, it should've been consulted, what is our budget for payroll? Can we pay this person?
Did anyone read the wonderful memo that I slipped over here?
Yes.
Well, if the first four paragraphs in there are factually accurate, and it sounds like they are, here's kind of sort of how this plays out, and help me out, because I visited with the facts from two or three people sitting there. City got some COVID funds, put them in the bank. They weren't earmarked, or there've been questions asked for three or four months now. Thought we did, I thought we did. That's easy to clear up. You go in, you look at the agenda, and you look at the minutes. And if there's not a vote in there that says we earmarked those funds, then you didn't. Just that simple. That's, that's not rocket science, I could call it, you know. I have not been produced anything that says those funds were earmarked. I know the council talked about it. The next fact that I was told was that in the middle of the budget year, somebody was hot. If the city hires or has an expense during the budget year that will exceed the total amount of the budget, you can't do it unless it's emergency. So if you're gonna hire somebody and give them a salary, and it exceeds the amount, the total expenditure under the budget, you have to say that is an emergency, or the city doesn't have the authority to do that. Does that mean you can't hire someone? No. What it means is, if you're gonna hire somebody in the middle of the year, somebody in this group has to say, where is the money coming from? Where are we gonna get it? And then she has to tell us, well, there's some, there's some funds over here in this line item that haven't been expended yet. There's some funds over here in this line item. We have to do an amendment to keep that under, that top. If you can't do it, then cities can't deficit spend. It's against the law to do it. You just can't. You're breaking the law if you do it. So, one of two things, you had to come in and say, hey, hey Dana, is there someplace this money can come from that we have, in a line item, that we haven't spent it yet? And cities do this all the time. Pump breaks down, you go, well, we don't have enough money to buy the pump in our budget. Where are we gonna get it? Well, we, the street department hasn't spent all their money yet. We can go over there and get that. Cities do this all the time. But if you do something that exceeds the total amount of your budget for that year, you just can't. And that, there's an Attorney General opinion in there where Odessa, the Commissioners Court, tried to do it, and they said, you can change your budget amount in the middle of the year, but it has to be an emergency. And Odessa government couldn't make, they were hiring somebody in the middle of the year. So then, what's that got us? Where are we now? The only thing I can tell you, and I'm not an accountant, that's your number at the law school. If this was all salary, then you look at what your line item and salary was, and you say, we had fifty grand set aside for salary. How much did we spend? Seventy-five. Well, the presumption would be that that twenty-five extra is COVID money. That's, that would be the simple solution, as far as I can tell. But if there are other things that were spent on, then you, I don't see how you can track it, because the initial, the initial proposition for it was it was put in the general fund and is commingled, and the only way you can do it then is by backtracking through the line items and seeing what was spent and what wasn't spent, and what's left over. I don't, I don't think the city council can ratify unbudgeted expenses by approving the financials, because your budget is an ordinance. And you cannot amend an ordinance by sitting in here saying, we're approving a bill. You have to amend the ordinance. So you have to amend the budget by ordinance. So I think what has to happen, if you guys want your budgets in the past to look right, is you have to figure out about how much you spent from it, and then go, we need to do a budget amendment on that right there. The other thing I said, many things to do, is to kind of figure out how much is left. And if you don't want that to be spent on salaries or something else, then you gotta say, that much money is over in the corner, wondering if it's gonna spend. If it becomes a line item, it's not expensed out, basically, for the change. And you just leave it there. And so if something comes up, and she has an expense she has to pay, and somebody says, where's the money gonna come from? You go, well, we got sixty-eight or seventy thousand dollars over there in the COVID funds that are not being used. And then it's up to you guys to decide if you're gonna spend it over there, or just not purchase the new truck, or just not give the guy the raise. And that's as simple as I can make it, having tried to figure on it for an hour or two, and saying, this is what I think the facts are, and this is how this shakes out. And then I found that Attorney General opinion, it almost tracks exactly what happened. Now, any other, does anybody have any questions to me? Because after this, I'm gonna shut up and drink the rest of this coffee. Yes, sir?
So we're talking about a historical fact. We're talking about money that was spent in the previous fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
What effect would having or creating an ordinance after the fact have?
It would, it would only let everyone else in here know that we're correcting, it would give you an amount. You'd have to amend the budget ordinance, the budget ordinance by saying, we're gonna amend it by this amount and put this amount over here. So everyone then can debate, is that the right amount of money? It's not, it's not gonna have any legal effect. That, you've already, you've already bought that horse. You've already bought it. And so, what you would do would just give you guys peace of mind of, how much did we spend out of those COVID funds? And we're gonna say, we're gonna put that back over there. That way, everybody starts off with a figure up here and on paper, that's what we got left over. But you're right, history's already, already done. You can't undone that. You can just say, this is for our records and our books to keep it straight.
So, since the, since the money was commingled in with the general fund, or the water fund, or wherever it went, because it looks like it was transferred at least once, how do you go back and say, okay, we had ten dollars in there, and so we put twenty more in there, but we spent this? How do you come about, well, did it come out of the ten dollars or the twenty dollars? You know? To find out, figure out what is actually left out of that deposit?
Well, and that's the difficult part, and the only way I can tell you to do it, if there were, hopefully, if there were no budget amendments back then, would you look at every line item and see what's expensed out of those line items? Every one of them. Here's how much was in there here. And you take those differences. And then, if you have some things left over in that budget that you didn't spend, and the city should not, you guys are not a profit business, you never will be, by law. You can't make money, and that's one of the things that people have to absorb when they get into this, because we're not here to make money. That's the reason your tax rate changes every year, because you just can't do it. That's what the government says. But you can take those amounts, you can say, hey, what we had left over that we didn't really spend in that line item, we can push that over there. But eventually, you're gonna have to do some math that just says, here's the expenses we made that were unbudgeted. We didn't have the money in the budget, in the line items for that. The only place that it was coming from was of COVID money. There's not any other choice. It's just there, we just got, you got to spend out. And then you say, okay, that minus what we deposited is whatsoever. And that's the only way I know to do it. That's the only way I know to do it.
So you can go back and figure, I mean, there was, I mean, you obviously see what the two deposits were. And you're saying that it was just spent on Brady's salary?
No, it was just him.
Okay, but you know what you spent on?
Brady's salaries, I know what-
But Brady's would not have a whole year's salary taken out of it? Because he didn't work here, right? He worked here for a whole year? From when he started, about the money?
I saw he worked from, he hired him in April. Well, he worked until the big table.
He didn't leave until after last year's election.
Because he wanted to take his vacation.
Last year's election. He was here after the election.
That's what made, he took his vacation, so he was here a whole year, so he got vacation.
Correct, yes, correct, yes, sorry.
Well, I've been asking it, right?
How was, how was his salary in hand up when you adopted the budget in October? If he's, if he's on the payroll, and you're telling, how did, how did you handle that when he came to that challenge?
Right, that's what I'm, I'm-
That was, when y'all originally hired him, though, he was not, he was not a budgeted employee.
I know, but after the budget was made, and he was-
Okay, y'all were purchasing his return, and y'all purchased his return, it's another thing.
So you're saying that that other came out of there?
Yes, I mean-
Okay. So his salary was budgeted the second year, but it just wasn't the first year?
Correct, yes.
So you could, you could take that total amount of the two checks, minus what his salary was the first year?
Right, and just because it was budgeted, though, doesn't mean that we have the actual money coming in to physically pay him from the water department. And when I can, the budget, okay. So, just because it's budgeted here-
So we hired somebody with no money at all?
That is exactly correct, yes, ma'am, and-
Why?
Don't ask me, it was not my decision. I was literally told after the fact, this is what we're doing.
Josh said he needed someone else to, over here.
I get that, I need somebody too, but I ain't, if I ain't got the money to pay him, I ain't gonna bring mine.
Since you've recorded that conversation, I'm gonna tell you that at that time, I pointedly said, and where is this money to pay him is supposed to come from? And I got nothing, so.
Well, we need to see on the paper.
So do we answer item E2 on this forensic item?
Not yet, we're still on C, so we like to answer it. Anyway, so I don't, I don't know.
So we still don't know that?
Well, I mean, we have, it was never earmarked.
So we're saying, to earm, in order to earmark these funds, that it needs to take the two checks that came in, and then subtract the salary plus the other things that you know that were purchased with that money, come up with a balance, and we're gonna make sure many. Does that sound right?
So break it down per item that was purchased, or-
That's the only way you're gonna get a total, is if you have it per item.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, break it down so that everybody can see that.
And then, that money can be set aside or earmarked or whatever for-
Whatever's left.
Whatever. Does that sound?
What's gonna be the position of the city, if you say, we're gonna hire this guy, but the salary's gonna be paid from what we make in the water and sewer department, when you look up in three months, and that income is not supporting that salary?
Yeah.
Because that just brings you right back to where you are up there.
Well, at this point in time, he's no longer here.
Right.
And we have, and so therefore, the earmark will be easier to do, because you don't have that employee, you have another one that's still making less money than each one of the other two did. And so, that money is gonna be easier, from what I see, to cover paying that personnel versus the other two that we had. that personnel versus the other two that we had. I mean, does that sound?
But that's.
Well, we haven't hired him yet, so did, I mean, we're still.
The police officer's not budgeted? Where is it budgeted?
Okay, but right now we're talking about the earmarks of the COVID fund. Let's, let's stay on the COVID fund earmarks. I mean, is that what y'all wanna do? Dana gets the totals on the two checks?
So, so I, I think this does start it up against item E, I think it is, right, the audit?
Definitely, I think.
I know.
Well, that's the way, I think you're gonna avoid.
You could call more than one agenda item at the same time if they're related, if you want to. That's, that's your job, that nobody else.
So, so the earmark is, that's a nonstarter. We haven't earmarked anything.
We have not.
It has been earmarked, and we're not gonna earmark anything, so I move the table, whole business out of C, COVID fund earmark. Until appropriate.
No, I disagree.
Well, it's, it's either next month, because we have the information, or it's later, because we have to get a forensic audit to figure out what the number is. Right, it's, it's not, if, I mean, unless, unless you're committing to work with her to decipher all this stuff out and figure out.
Well, she knows, she said she knows.
Okay, but somebody else is talking about a forensic audit.
Okay, do y'all wanna skip down and look at item, uh, E before we decide on item C? I mean, we're thinking.
I mean, why would, why would we ask Dana to do something and then pay somebody else to do the same thing?
Okay, uh, we're gonna talk about, uh, skip out, skip down to item E and, uh, discuss this forensic audit, since it kinda ties in with the COVID funds. It's got digital, I can talk.
No, she, that's not what she's looking for, she's looking for something else.
That's the material, y'all, but.
We have been discussing this COVID money forever. And, um, I had talked to, um, I think it's McFenden, she does our, our regular audit. And they, when, I was thinking when you say, I'm gonna do an audit, cause I think of IRS, and when they do an audit, they do an audit. I understand that McFenden takes one section out of all of our stuff that we turn in. And that's the one thing that they audit, is that one section. Well, a forensic audit is gonna go in there, and we're not doing this trying to find somebody doing something bad or anything of the sort. We were told that most businesses actually do this every four years. And, uh, the reason being is they can go in there and check and see where the money's going and how, you know, if it's being moved around or whatnot. And that's what, uh, I was interested in, in doing, uh, the forensic audit. Is just to see, since we've never had one ever, uh, we were, uh, doing these. I think we decided, uh, that the seven thousand dollar would be something like, is it three or six months? And they, or if, if they didn't find anything, that's wonderful. If they did find something, then maybe let us know what they found. And like I said, we're not doing this as a witch hunt or expecting to find somebody over here sticking their fingers in the tail, you know, being sticky fingers or anything. We're just trying to see what is going on because of not knowing really how things work. Uh, we were also told, uh, or I was also told that, uh, one person that is completely in charge of the whole city is a dangerous thing. One on, one person knows everything about the city and the rest, uh, the council doesn't have any clue on anything, not that I would know, which, I don't know. Or anything of the sort. But, uh, that way, uh, we are at Dana's mercy to let us know what we should or should not know about what the city is. And what, how much money we have, where it's going, how it's been spent, have we lost money or whatever? And, uh, we paid twenty-six thousand, or is it twenty-three thousand from McFenden?
About twenty-three.
About twenty-three thousand a year, uh, to do one section of all the things that we have. Well, that's what they, uh, that's what they told me. And I, I assume McFenden should know. But, uh, anyway, uh, what, uh, I was, I was thinking that we could, should try and see if the seven thousand dollars would say, okay, y'all are clean, there's nothing wrong and all that. Or then again, it may go back somewhere that, I don't know how far back they can go in thirty, fifty days. They may go back and find that there's been a lot of things going on that we should've known about. I mean, uh, it's just something I'm going out there that I thought would be good for the city. And like I said, if we spend twenty-six thousand for one, it looks like you'd be interested in knowing where your money's going.
It's just good business.
Do what?
A forensic audit every few years is just good business.
Well, that's what I was told, but you know, some people like it, some people don't, some people, I've been told that we're on a witch hunt. I'm not on the witch hunt, cause I, I'm, I'm not that way. You know, I'm just wanting to know, I don't know where it's found.
Cause I know how much meat jerky it's gonna find.
Oh, that's great.
Do what? Do what? I did know if you said something about beef jerky.
Okay, so what we wanna do with this, uh, forensic audit?
Well, let, let me, let me say one other thing. Like my hand homes says, they only audit the general fund. They do not audit water and sewer fund. Well, I mean, that doesn't even make any sense to me. I assume when they did an audit, they audit your books.
But they don't.
You know, but they don't. So we don't know if there was anything in the water and sewer fund crazy or not. We didn't even look at it.
So that's where we're gonna do the forensic audit specifically, is water or sewer, or both?
I'd just do the whole thing, let away your, your, everything is done, there's no question about it. But again, you know, just like I told her, I said, we approved that audit. She could've gave me anything she wanted to. I'm not an accountant, I'm not an attorney, I can't read that junk. So do we approve it or we not approve it? You know, I mean, we approve it so that they get paid, I guess. But if we don't approve it, what do we tell them? Why didn't you approve it? I don't know, because I don't know what all y'all, y'all've done. I know more now than I did at the time they did the audit. So when they told me they did not audit the water and sewer, I said, well, that's, that's half of our, half, that's more than half. That's a lot of our, our funding right there. I mean, that's, that's what we did, I mean, we're, everything we had was water and sewer. I don't know why they wouldn't have audited that. Anyway. Uh, as far as the digital, I think it should be down there before here.
They were amazed that we've never had.
What did McFadden and Holmes say about the forensic audit?
I mean, I talked to them about doing a forensic audit.
This is a company out of Cleveland, why wouldn't we contract or ask McFadden and Holmes?
This company's in McKinney.
Okay, well, their website says they're based out of Cleveland.
No, they're in, no, they're in McKinney.
So.
Well, they're based in McKinney.
What would, what would be the benefit of having a CPA firm do this?
I don't think it would be in depth. Uh, they can now go through there, you know, if you go in there, say that we had someone here a year, years ago and they were, I don't know, computers haven't been around that long. Anyway, uh, you can't, you know, they might be wanting to scrub, thinking they can scrub things off the computer. Well, they can go and get things off the computer that you think you have scrubbed, that you haven't scrubbed. And that's what you want. You want to know if somebody's doing something that's good or shit.
I don't wanna be in here for two months and somebody's saying, well, we spent that and that's COVID fund money. Well, yeah, but that was a regular, you've gotta have that money somewhere in this year's budget that has not yet been spent. Cause you can say, well, take it out of that, we'll spend it on this, and she and I can work on the budget.
Why y'all be telling me they don't audit the water sewer when it's literally right here in this book?
Brittany told me that they did not audit the water sewer, just about.
Okay, so what y'all wanna do?
There's something I'm having to do, that y'all been having?
We would be having to do a forensic audit if y'all would've kept up with the money in the restaurant too. Okay, I'll go with you. Just minus it out, and your COVID funds, maybe.
Okay, we can't do, we can't agree to just spend the money on that, cause we don't know where it's gonna come from at this point. So we might as well make a motion to table it until at least we get the answer on the COVID funds.
We got five thousand dollars sitting in the police department right now.
Not allocated, so I don't think you're gonna want that money to go to?
Drug testing.
Drug testing and background checks.
Have we done any yet? Have we done any yet?
I don't know.
No. Not a bit, no. Background check won't be anything, but I don't know what they charge for a drug test.
They're not gonna charge for a drug test?
Sheriff's department. Well, I make a motion, we table this until we come up with a, a answer for the amount that's in the COVID fund.
Okay, great, just vote a motion to, um, table the forensic audit, item E, until we find out the amount in the COVID funds. Give me a second of that motion on bail, ma'am? It's five zero. Okay. So, uh, do y'all wanna go back and revisit, uh, item C then? That's the COVID fund earmark?
Only thing I'd like to, if we, if we can, I don't know if we can do it at this, or if we have to set another, get an item later. Uh, we need to, going forward, we need to make sure that there is no money moved for unbudgeted items, unless it goes to council. I don't know if that goes along with the COVID funds earmark or not, but if it does, then I'll make a motion to do that.
I'm not fully sure you need a motion to follow the law.
Well, I, I understand.
That's what's supposed to happen. And again, and I'm not trying to be redundant. If she comes in here and tells you guys, or she says, you don't have the budgeted funds to pay this, you can't do it. You can approve paying the bills because all, all you're doing there is saying, yeah, we paid the bills. But you're not going back and saying, what was the source of that, that fund? Where did that come from? So she needs to come in and tell you, you do not have the money to pay these bills. I'm a hitch report, can't approve it. Yeah, not gonna do it. Something's not gonna get paid. Then the only thing you're gonna have to do, if you've committed to making payments on things, you're gonna have to spend some of your COVID money. Or you're gonna have to default on your loans. One of the two. You can't have it both ways. If you voted to spend all this money and you've got a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in, in, in things sitting over here that hadn't been allocated anything, you're gonna have to go get your loan, or you're gonna have to default on what you're paying. So you don't need a motion to follow the law, you just need to tell the city secretary, if we don't have the money, tell us so we can do something about it. Is that, does that seem right? I mean, if that, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's what the law is.
But, true, so. What do you do when they don't listen to that? She's already said twice, we don't have anything in the budget for, for a police officer, and there isn't.
Okay.
Everybody's a lawyer.
On this COVID fund earmark, um, we had discussed her taking the, uh, the two check totals and then subtracting out, and then that would give us a balance to start with. And then that would, uh, maybe alleviate some of this, how much money of COVID do we have left? We take item C and give us a, you know, a total, and then we'll decide from there how, maybe make us a line or something.
If we wanna earmark it from there or whatever? So do we need to table that item until we get the amount, or?
That would be what, our action item would be, um, that would be our action item into going into buttoning the earmarks, you've gotta have some background.
Right.
And that would be our background, but we've gotta make it a note here so we can have it written saying, yes, we told, you know, we asked Dana to get the two COVID checks, subtract what she knows that was taken out of that, and that's our balance going forward. At this point, what are you gonna do? Because you've got your forensic audit, you've already tabled.
Right, so at thi, at this point, when she does come up with the amount, then, then it needs to be moved into a line item to be done with whatever, okay?
So is that the motion, what the chair just said?
Yeah.
Does it sound, wait a minute, does it sound good?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, that's, that's kind of what I suggest. You take, you take the deposits, you take the unbudgeted stuff that you know about, those expenses, you subtract these from this, and you come up with a figure. And then you get to have more debate about, is that, would that feel right?
So I'm making a motion to take the two totals of the checks. To take the two totals of the checks, and then you subtract the salary and the items that you know that were purchased with these COVID funds, and bring us the total back next month. And that'll give us something to go with. Well, as you see fit, yes, yes. Because we've already told you, as you see fit, you're going to get hard to commit. Well, realistically. All right, that is my motion.
On other expenditures. Second.
Okay, um, please show us my motion and give me a second to get all in favor. Okay, um, a gen- a counsel will get another question. Okay, does anybody see a problem with this request form?
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, why, why are we coming?
Greg? You wanted to change the Wednesday firm.
Yeah. Right. So we have a, a chance to, um, get, get the information into the agenda. And we're, we're going to get a.
So you want it two weeks before the meeting?
No, 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 the Wednesday before.
Oh.
Because I mean, when the agenda comes out, it's, and, and it doesn't have the things that maybe we're, that we thought were going to be on it, which is out of luck.
So the, you've already read the top list?
No.
Oh.
That's the original. That's the one y'all approved.
Oh, that's what it is?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
What be you, who wishes you fine to the middle?
I'm good.
This is the one that y'all voted on? Because Redmer originally had two signatures.
Right.
And after the new council came about a year ago, this is the one that was voted on, and I was asked to put it back on there.
So are all y'all good with the?
Motion to accept the form as it is. Agenda request form.
Okay, great, my motion to accept the, uh, leave the, uh, request, agenda request form as is.
Why would we make an exception to not do something?
No, I mean, let's just do, no, no, uh, action, make the table.
Has, has the council already adopted this form?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't need to do it. We're not changing it, we're not unchanging it. Just, let's just go on.
Okay, new business stance of approval or proof of support? Yep.
As is.
Did we up very quick books already?
No.
I'm not in total version. Any information about it?
As it, as it turns out, is that my budget?
Oh, my God. Hold on, let me see if you got the software.
It won't be that much.
When'd you say that?
No.
No, no?
No, they won't. You only press three hundred dollars.
Once again, I'm going to say this one more time.
Right.
If you've got other money that hadn't been spent, y'all were just talking a while ago, about $5,000 in the police budget. And we're going to transfer that over to the forensic thing. You can do that. You've just got to tell somebody you're doing it. So when you say, is that budgeted, you got the answer, maybe we'll know it isn't, but do we have money in the budget that we can transfer over to cover this?
That we want to do that?
Yes.
How much was the QuickBooks upgrade?
I can't remember the motion, but the motion included. Well, that did actually kind of answer the question. Table no action, motion table no action.
She making a motion to table?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the status was.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to table the approval of QuickBooks upgrade.
I'm sorry.
It upstages that, it says stance of approval. Stance of approval of QuickBooks upgrade. Oh, thank you. It was already approved?
Yeah, it was approved.
So it needs to say stance of approved, stance of approved?
I just wanted to know if it purchased, it's filed.
Purchased and installed.
So it should be, okay. So it shouldn't have been under new business, then it should be just a discussion.
Right. It's the same as, as A, Judge, Judge Emily's presentation.
Adam C stands for public works of the police search.
I don't know whose I have that was.
It was my opinion, we got a pad in the paper.
Know nothing about it.
And he even searched the hood.
Didn't we, didn't we pay a bill last month for the paper?
Y'all did. I'm pretty sure that Paul advised y'all that he was leaving.
But he didn't leave him.
Exactly. But prior to him leaving, y'all asked, I'm sorry, the mayor asked for an ad to be placed for.
Within his situation change, you know, had already paid for it?
Correct. But I believe that not all council members were made privy to the information that he was not leaving.
No, I didn't know. I just saw him still working around.
Right.
Okay, just so everybody knows, Paul is still employed at the city.
And we're not looking for anyone at this time.
This is a discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, change of employee policy and procedures regarding work hours. Everybody's that wrong?
Yes.
Yes.
We want to change, we can do something.
Well, I, I had actually asked this to be put on here. Um, because from what I understood, that if it rained, Paul was told he didn't have to work except to make up the hours on the weekends.
That's right.
My, my, um, my, um, thought was, well, if it works, if it rains three days out of the week, you can't make up three days in two days. Um, anyway, um, I felt like we had enough busy work that he could be working in the office or over there in his little, uh, maintenance, so where the cars are and everything. Uh, had enough to do over there, or maybe straighten it up the wellhouse, houses or something. So you will take it from there. I mean, that was my concern. I think it should be available here at the office from whenever it opens to whenever it closes, just in case we have, um, you know, somebody calling. Dana's supposed to be here from eight to four thirty. I just think he should be available at the same times. Because due to the rain, you know, like this week it's supposed to rain three days. It may not, may rain. But he couldn't make up three days.
The, the only thing is, I know the past, they had people that sent out at those sewer ponds in the truck all day long. And they were doing anything. And we don't need that.
Uh, he told me, and they're pre- working over here doing inventory, because I thought reminded him, that's what he was tired to do if there's bad weather. So I, I don't come up here and check on him, so I can only see he's doing it.
So we just need to decide what, what we're going to do, because it all needs to be, he all, he needs to be told the same thing. It's just two different things.
When does the summer hours kick in?
Whenever it gets to the point that it's, it's real.
I think they should change it at the time.
Last week.
Well, the first day, June, now you can use June.
Yeah, June one. It's really just, you know, there's that heat, you know, that, that after, late afternoon heat is what, is why they, of course, they shift their hours back like that. If he chooses, he doesn't have to. He wants to stay until four thirty, you know, do eight to four thirty instead during the summer, that's his choice, but he doesn't have to change the hours if he wants to.
So what else, I mean?
Leave it as it is and just make sure he understands eight five, eight, four thirty.
Eight, four thirty? Y'all have a problem with that?
That's the policy.
Okay, on something like that, do we just inform the police we don't have to take any motion?
Look, if that's the policy, you didn't change it, then it remains the policy.
Okay, he just needs to be informed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor, I don't know what that word is, woman, Seladonia Code Ordinance Chapter.
A, section eight.
Well, this one's mine, section eight. That 103 appointment of officers, mayor shall appoint by, and with the advice and consent of the city council, all officers of the city whose election and appointment is not otherwise provided for, any vacancies occurring in an appointed office shall be filled in the same manner. So I want to make sure that we're doing things by the book, following the rules. I do not recall, uh, any form of appointment of Mr. Morris to, uh, the Lake Rowell Hall zoning committee, commission. So now's the time we can take care of that.
Excuse me, uh, when the, uh, Newt took over the, uh, the, over the board. He called him, of course, he offered the job. And I hadn't started cancer treatment yet, so therefore I told him I didn't know how to react to it. And he, uh, I said, would you have a problem with, I mentioned Deisha and Greg to focus. This has gotten, that board has nothing to do with the city of LaDonia or the council, it is a county thing. So why would you?
All officers of the city whose election or appointment is not otherwise provided for, that position is not provided for in our ordinances. You appointed Greg to the Lake Rowell Hall zoning commission.
I asked Newt what he thought, and Newt said he thought he would be a great asset.
But he's not aware of our ordinances. I'm, I'm only asking for you to ask the advice and consent of the council. I am completely aware.
What's the difference in Jan appointing Todd to it?
Because Jan, because Jan appointed, so the, the roles that were appointed to the commission were the mayor and the mayor prosem. Those are elected positions. The, the city council elects those.
But it was illegal for him, he had heard of.
Well, actually, actually, as I understand it, actually, I understand it, they rewrote history and said he was never on the commission, so.
There was two in it. There was, there was none instead. There was actually more than just him.
So I, I'm just asking, if this is an appointment, then I would expect the mayor to ask the advice and consent of the city council.
Well, I guess, I had no problem with that, to be honest with you, but the way I understood the appointment was it's a county and, uh, overseen by the commissioners court, which is not us. And that's why, uh, I knew Deisha was, Deisha has her hands full. And, uh, Greg, uh, has a lot of interest in the lake. So I, I figured he would represent the city of LaDonia real well, and that's why I.
I don't have any doubt how this vote will go if you just ask the consent and consent.
So, but, hold on, but council is, with this being the, um, what is it called? What's the?
Water.
What may it call?
Lake Rowell Hall, Danning County Lake Rowell Hall zoning board.
Okay. That's what it is.
Okay, let, let me just say this. June the fourteenth, Judge Moore, she's no longer here on this anymore. We presented a lot of information. If you only start from there, I will. But, uh, because this was a petition to remove a couple of people, and this is what came out of it. They were trying to figure out how Jan and Todd got on the board. And it is the person who is to serve for two years. Corrective action needs to be taken with regard to the number of members. It is the person. So, again, that goes back to June.
So when it was first put out there, they said anybody that was interested to go to jury magnets and, and tell them they were interested. So from what I understand, they had several that were interested, that were from the LaDonia area, and then it was changed to the mayor that would represent the town. And then it was changed to the mayor that would represent the town. I don't know how Todd got on there, or the other four, three people. I don't know how they got on there, which would, which made the committee have more than what they were supposed to have.
Legal. Legal.
They had nine, and they had to put it down to five. So, five was not the only one.
Right.
So, anyway, the mayor was left on there. And we had a election. Patricia received the mayor job. And so it's to wait until, so it's changing in May, they waited till January. They had two meetings, one on the twenty-second of June, one on the February the third, okay. And the judge, Newt, started with Judge Moore. And they removed the three, the five, with the four extra ones. And then, like Ms. Hurd said, then it came up to where she was supposed to go on, and then she told you what her it was, so...
Okay, let me go back. It says, in that same statement, it says, "Research was done to determine whether the position of mayor of Ladonia was selected or the person was appointed to the commission." It is the person who is to serve, not the mayor.
Not the position, the person.
Correct. So, right there, that takes the mayor out of it. That's not, not have anything to do with it. And then they, and then they, and it says, give the, give the ma, the person the chance to either be a member or designate. And then on May thirty-first...
Say that again.
What?
Three, what you just read.
Or her designate.
Yes.
Counsel?
It's not as clear cut as everybody wants it to be. By policy or practice, if the mayor of this city always has a seat on that board, then you gotta come in, or he's gotta come in and ask. If what they're saying is, you know what, we just willy-nilly go out into the county and find somebody, and that person gets to do it, then I don't think that they have, whoever that is, has to do it. The, it may be more of a protocol thing than something else. Because if you have an elected position here, and you have the right to designate people to take your place, it might be just politically correct to do it that way. But whether it's required or not, it's a, it's a real close call. And I would say, if they think that it's not the mayor that has the seat, if it's just anybody, then probably not.
So, we're going with willy-nilly?
If they just, if they came out and asked you to serve on the...
They didn't ask me to ask the mayor.
I understand. And what they're saying, their legislative intent was, it's not, it's not the mayor. It's Patricia. She just happens to be there. And so, does that make, does that kick in our ordinance that says, "Well, the mayor has to do this"? Well, it would seem not. That you didn't have to. I'm telling you, if it's causing this kind of problem here, the mayor might wanna come in and say, "I'm not gonna do this. Do you guys wanna help put somebody on that board?" But I don't think you can, I don't think you can say it. What he's saying is correct. What Greg's saying is correct. They say it's the person and not the, not the office. If it was the office, and they say every time, it's gonna be the mayor of Ladonia and the mayor of Todd Gap, and those people, then you are absolutely right.
Then that, then why did they have her step down if it's not the mayor? When she lost that seat.
Because of, of a petition that was written. We petitioned to have, and I say "we," I'll use that loosely. We petitioned to have Jan and Todd removed. That's where all this came about.
I didn't think that motion passed, though.
One motion.
I was over the impression that that board said...
It's right here, this went to, this is Commissioner Court.
He's got the minutes.
He's got all the minutes.
So, there again, the commissioners voted on January the ninth to appoint me as the board member. So, again, you know, like I say, there's, there's a lot more to this. But the biggest portion is, it's the person. The person is to serve. When we petitioned this, we said, Jan, that was our argument at first. We said, "Well, Jan is the mayor, we have a new mayor now. The new mayor should be on there."
We had a new mayor?
And so, at that point in time, that's when the Commissioners Court got more involved and said, "Okay, we gotta figure this out." And that's when they removed Todd and put Jan on until January the first. So, but that's, that's the basics of what had happened.
That presents an interesting question. If, if what you're saying is, we think it ought to be the mayor from here that's on the board every time. And so, the former mayor is unelected, not elected, but she's still on the board. And this, this body of these people sought it to take some action to try to get her off the board, because they think it ought to be someone here. That, that's a different perspective, too.
But that's not what happened.
You can't say stuff. I'm sorry. We love for you to, but it don't work that way. That's why everybody's up here beating on stuff. I'll talk to you later. You can yell at me in a minute, okay? So, the answer is not as clear as what y'all wanna make. You might be right, you might be wrong. You might be right, you might be wrong. So, what are you gonna do, is the question.
So, to alleviate all of this? It'd be better to just take a vote?
I think so.
Make a motion to make a motion.
Hey, either that or take it to Commissioners Court.
We're not taking it to that.
My only point in doing this is, the mayor has told us many times, she's not making the decisions. The council is making the decisions, right? It would appear in this case that she made the decision. I just, I just want the council to be involved in these types of decisions. Like I said, I have no doubt what the outcome's gonna be.
Well, I feel like this is it right here. My opinion, this is it right here. It's the person, it's not the position.
I'm making a motion to leave Greg on the Lake Rowell Hall water board. Okay, Debbie's made a motion to leave Greg on the Lake Rowell, Lake Rowell Hall water board. Is what?
It's a zoning board, yeah.
Does it say that? Right. On the, on the, the island.
Right, because y'all were just supposed to be cutting up your points.
Okay, so Debbie's made a motion to leave Greg on the plain zoning water, Lake Rowell Hall water board.
He's not, y'all aren't appointing him to the water board. It's a zoning board.
Plain zoning, you said water board.
You keep saying water board, though.
Okay, so just the board.
The zoning board.
Just zoning board.
Yes, I see.
Debbie's made a motion. Give me a second of that motion. All in favor? Uh?
I'm standing.
Okay. Employee drug test in the hall. Um, another idea? Because I think that anytime an employee drives or a city vehicle, they need to be drug tested. Anytime they're working around heavy machinery or over the office or anything, I just think it's good policy. You're gonna do one, you do them all. The policeman's gonna have to be drug tested, so therefore, everybody, if you...
If someone's involved in an accident, I don't think so. As soon as that, as soon as they say, "I'm here, leave me to go take a test."
So, that's why that's on there?
Is that the policy? It's already written? Is that the way it's written?
For involved in accident, yes.
But you can't, can you randomly test anybody up there?
Our policy does not state for that.
I think that's what you're talking about.
I think the other day...
Will it be twice, you know, if we decide twice a year? You know, three months?
Well, forever. But I think when they, when they're hired, they should be tested in the end, random.
After that.
And then, yeah.
So, we wanna change that?
We don't think, we don't think there's any...
Not a round, they should.
Okay. So, I'm gonna make a motion to add to our hiring policy that we drug test upon hiring. And then, just randomly, after that.
As requested by council?
I don't think y'all should do it that, because that's once a month, basically.
Six months?
No, no, I meant, y'all got, y'all decided, okay, in the month of June, and I'm not saying it needs to be a set date, I'm saying y'all discuss it amongst yourselves and say, can they take that to class session?
Well, it's not, it's not a matter of going into executive session. So, if you say next month, pretty much everybody's drug tested, and everybody goes out and between that.
That's what I'm saying, that's...
It's not really random.
No, not if everybody knew it was gonna come.
If the drug testers just show up, then it's how they drug test.
Yeah, it's like, it's like your day, glad you checked in and here.
But who decides when that, when that's gonna be?
Exactly, that's what...
Well, you get with the company, and then they just, whenever they show up, they call the mayor, the David Ford, Sam, Melvin, and Warren.
Thank y'all, nobody, Mr. Lane doesn't call.
It's Coach Burden's on the one, no? When they show up with their gloves and stuff on.
Okay.
Did they drug test me on?
That's my motion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, purchase tractor tires. One of them is for four hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Yes.
The other one is for two eighty-five ninety from D and E.
And the one for four forty-nine is in Paris.
Yes, D and E's in color. Are there any different?
It's a one tire, too.
That's for two tires.
Two tires.
I'm both those.
So, these two right here is two eighty-five something?
Two eighty-five for both tires, mounted and disposable each. You can make a motion too?
Motion to...
Okay, can we make a motion to purchase two tractor tires from D and E? Russell, a second, is all in favor? You oppose? Okay. I don't think we need to go into class session, all right? Okay, do I have Russell to drink?
That's the gun.